If you're on already, please like that button and we record these calls. We've got over 91 people that are invited to these calls and or members. And they have the opportunity to watch this in the back end of the 1776 Syndicate. And it becomes a valuable tool and resource for them down the road. So a couple of ground rules here is please be positive in your questions. We're not here to attack, we're here to grow and work with one another and learn from one another. And if we don't feel you're appropriate, we're not only going to kick you off, we're going to kick you out. So thank you for respecting those rules. So I wanted to open up tonight, just a brief reminder of the 1776 Syndicate. And the values that are on there, for those of you that are members or if you're a guest tonight. You know, we've got a lot of things on that site that brings you value. And I want to say the first thing is our campaign strategy. Now, obviously, we're midway through the election cycle. We just had primaries, but if you're on the other side of that, I really encourage you to look at that campaign strategy. And consider what needs to be done between now and the generals. I was just talking to Rod before the call. Seems like a lot of people are relaxing over the summer, which is fine. If we weren't in the war of our lives and if the 2022 elections didn't mean more than it ever has. In probably the history of the United States. So I want to encourage you to really focus on what your general election plan is. Get out there, get knocking on the doors, use some of those strategies that we've offered. Because I've seen the Democrats out there knocking, Rod just said he saw a guy he recognized. The last three election cycles hitting doors. I know John Fuller's opponent, Kyle Waterman is very active and well in the city of Kalispell. And I've seen others in Missoula and across the state. So please, please use the resources here. And the other resources that are available is not only the campaign guide, budget basics, fundraising guide and suggestions. Campaign advertising, and then I was going to mention this in another place. But we also have a link to the book, Robert's Rules of Order. And I'm sure Giuseppe or G-Man will agree with me on how important that book is. When you finally do get elected, because you're going to get elected. Having that bull, that book at your beck and call is extremely important.
Point of order, that's the most important.
That's right. Hey, those that knew, those that know the rules win the game, okay? So think about getting that. And by the way, I just want to remind everybody, we've had some wonderful calls in the last seven months. Campaign resource calls, we've had marketing agencies, Sam Rabinos, political strategist. Rod and I have done election recaps. We've had election, elected officials, Kat Komack from Florida, the Congresswoman. John Fuller, Braxton Mitchell, Mark Nolan, Gary Hall, Brad Abell, and many others. We've also had Elsie Aronson on here. And we've had some citizens like Taylor Claridge, Jermaine Wagner, a 40-year educator from Utah. Political action committees, Darren Godd from Restore Liberty. And the list goes on, Mary, you were, you're on tonight, you were on the show as well. These are all great discussions and tools to help you be better running your campaigns, running for elected office. Or just to enhance what you're doing. So they're there for you. I was going to reference Nadelson, his book is in our library. Mary, we're going to get your book up in our library too. I was just thinking about that tonight as I reviewed it. So thank you for this, this brief recap on the 1776. You know, speaking of Robert's Rules and the importance of it. I have the pleasure of being on G-Man's email list when he reaches out and watching the banter back and forth. But I think more importantly is his ability to communicate with his constituents. What's going on? What's been discussed? What's he going to do about it and the direction? Not to mention, and Giuseppe, I want to commend you for this. You offer an opportunity for people to meet you on Mondays, to schedule a time, sit down with you and be heard. I can't say that I've seen that from any elected officials. I'm sure it happens, but the fact that I'm on your list and I know if I ever want to meet with you. And talk to you about something that you've allocated time for that. And I want to commend you for that. I've got your bio in front of me. It reads like a book. So I'm going to leave out a lot of that stuff. You've had a lot of success, you're a pilot, you work for Next Gen and it's transitioned to other company names. You represent 46 countries with that company. But really where my attention went is straight to your bucket list. And thank you for including that, because I think knowing the man and what inspires him is as important as knowing your background. And your bucket list items have checked, I'll read a couple. You've lived in four continents. You hold a world record for the Earth Polar circumnavigation in a factory stock. Pilatus PC 12, I don't even know what that looks like. I know it's a, it's a plane. In your 60th year, you challenged yourself to ascend 60,000 before your birthday. Which you did 60 miles in less than 60 hours. So grandchildren, two children. And then finally, I'll just end it with this, and I'm going to talk to you directly. But you've got a bucket list item to be checked. And that's hike to the South Pole and run three times around the world. I don't know why, but I believe that you're going to do that. So thank you for sharing and inspiring the rest of us with your bio and your success.
Thank you, thank you, Jim, thank you, Rod, thank you, 1776 Syndicate. For giving me the chance of keeping spreading the word. I am not a politician. I never thought I would be running for any elected office, but five years ago, when I became American. And it took me so long, I moved to US in 2020, sorry, in 2000. Because I'm a naval officer from the Italian Navy. A number of clearances needed to be obtained. And I did not want to lose my officer status from Italy. So eventually we got everything cleared up and I was sworn in American in Missoula. Judge Maholy Court. And, and when we were sworn, judge asked us, the 12 people who were sitting in the jury seats, but were the new Americans. If we had anything to say. And I looked down and I was kind of shy. And the judge said, I knew it for 25 years in my court. Nobody ever had the guts to say something. So I raised my hand. And it looks at me and the clerk looks at me, they all stand. I get up and I say, Your Honor, are you serious about us talking in your court? And he said, sir, a judge in his court is always very serious. He was kind of being funny. I go, well, then I want to thank this country. I'm very thankful to this country. This country made my growth in Italy possible, not speaking German. And, and I remember my grandfather saying, if you ever bump into an American, bow to them and say, thank you. For having freed our country. And, and so I gave a little speech. I said, I was even thankful to pay taxes here while in Italy, I'll be paying 65%. And then I said, and I commit to serve. Little did I know that five years later, I'd be running for city council, which is a tough race. We were seven opponents for one seat or nine for three seats, but two of them were incumbents. So I had to learn everything from scratch, all the things you have on the 7076 Syndicate. I had to make them up by myself. I was selling a product that for the first time was myself, not myself, but my plan, my program. And, and I learned a lot. I, I, I learned that the most important thing, and it's not a new lesson, it's discipline, perseverance and consistency. And the other thing is that, yes, people will give you advice, but there is the book too. You can go back to the Constitution, we have two. One of the United States of America and one of Montana. And we also have the Montana code annotated as well as the CB code in my case. Whoever runs in various elections should go back to the book, should listen to advisors. But in the end, it's the book that counts, like we're talking about Robert's Rules of Order. So, so I ran, I got elected and I get this letter in very official paper from the court. Federal court from Missoula. And says to me, sir, you delivered on your promise. Five years later, we read on the paper that you did it. You never knew it, but if you come to Missoula, your picture is in my courtroom as the person who committed to serve. And I bet on you, and in fact, you've been there for the last four years. So I touch my heart and makes me happy paying taxes, even if it's ever painful. But enough of me. You asked me to share some of the, of the activities I do. I do believe I have my faith and my faith, hopefully it will show. Through my actions, I'm not a bubble thumper or an evangelized, an evangelist. I like for people to say, how do you do this? And if they ask me like this, so now we can have a coffee and talk. At the same time, you mentioned, Jim, that I meet people, I do. And I log everything, I have a journal, whoever runs a journal, I think is a very important item. For instance, I had mapped all the signs of where and where they were, my signs, my campaign signs. And I lost track of them when the women of Whitefish, they call themselves the Wow. Grabbed a bunch of them and they started planting them all over. At that point, I lost track, but until then I was keeping track. So, so far I've met 101 90 people. This is from January 3rd, when I was sworn in, in 32 meetings. Mostly Monday afternoons, but also 101 meetings. If I can give an advice to some of the people who run, if they're not very popular like I was. I was the sleazy business person, maybe a hard right guy in their perspective. Or maybe a super leftist from Italy in someone else's perspective. Was that I found my most influential attackers or detractors. And I invited them for dinner, for breakfast, for coffee. And you know, after we talked, it wasn't that bad. Some never voted for me, now they regret it and actually they text me. And they say to me, you need to carry these items. And I say, you know what, talk to the two people you voted for first and then you come to me, I tease them. But long story short, grace, listening, persistency, discipline and consistency. And going back to the book. So in terms of what I think it's important for a future. My mission at this point is youngsters, is the youth. And that's where I teach leadership, I teach a leadership flathead. And one of the assignments I give my students is go home, take a week and come back with your own obituary. And it's interesting when people try to write what someone else would tell about them once they're in a casket. It's interesting what things come up. And it's always a very wealthy person, he built the seven apartment complexes. It's about values. And in my case, I like people to say, it was a good dad, it was a good servant. And he helped to make the world a better place at the time. So since the beginning of living here, I dedicated myself to youth, the Boy Scouts, when it was a good organization. In my book, I can be a little bit discriminatory at this point, but Ben was a good organization. And myself as a former naval officer and Joe Coco is a former Marine and we tease each other. Because I tell the Marines that we pay their payroll and they say, well, we need women in the, in the Marine Corps. That's why we have the Navy. And it's normal, it's kind of very parochial. Decided that one way to change the world was to shape young men of service and character. And shape them by example and shape them by life. So Troop 1917, in the 2006, all the way to 2013, would camp every month. Of the year, from Friday afternoon till Sunday night. And the January and February campouts were the ones on top of Marais Pass. And the tents were not allowed because we need to dig our own snow caves. And this kid still today, this morning I was a FLIR, the bakery, David Reimer. Who was one of my Eagle Scouts, his brother Daniel, older, retired as a captain from the Army Rangers with two deployments in Afghanistan. And now serves as a project manager of the expansion at the airport. They're both my little Eagle Scouts, David is a pastor, but works at FLIR on the side. And they all remember these experiences. Continuing on changing the world, the child at the time, there is another beautiful organization nationwide. It's called Civil Air Patrol. Civil Air Patrol is an auxiliary to the Air Force. And its coed and teaches cadet leadership. They are between year 12 of age, all the way to 18. Aerospace education and safety and search and rescue. So we are the guys that when an airplane, normally a little plane crashes, the beacon starts beeping. And the sheriff contacts us and we go out, normally we don't let the kids, pardon, the cadets, they don't want to be called kids. Get near the plane until an adult gets there, because sometimes the scene is pretty traumatic. But that's another good organization to serve at. I have promoted job shadowing in my company since I moved to Whitefish 18 years ago. So I had kids then and now they're business people who remember what we did together. And it's interesting, when they show up, I make the job interview, I make it serious. I make them set an appointment and then I actually change it. Because I want to see if they call me or write three or four days before the appointment to confirm it again. And sometimes I change it just to see how they play the roles. And in my job shadowing, I've done it with Nixon, now Barack. I've done, I've done it with camps. So I have shadowed the councilman of the council person, now that we have to be politically correct. So I had young people from the age of nine up to the age of 17. Spending a full day, a full Monday with me at city, city hall. And you know what's interesting? Kids are good. Kids are good mirrors of us dirty adults. So I, I be sitting in my office that the CD graciously let me use every Monday afternoon. And Mayor would show up before the council meeting. And I say, Mayor meet Ezra is job shadowing, is learning about city leadership. And you see them kind of stand up and smile and be heavy better than when we are together in chambers. And, and the kid, and the young people learn and see how, you know, the great public, which from Latin means the public thing. Is, is that way. At local level as well, as well as higher level. My kids are both pages for Ryan Zinke when he was the Senator in, in the Montana Legislature. And we're good family friends. I also, I also teach junior achievement, this is to younger kids, I do sixth graders. It's a good initiative, teach business to the youngsters. But my passion that puts together service and flying is this organization called Angel Flights. And if you ever want to look it up, or if you have people you know that are in needs of transportation for treatment. And there are some. We are an organization of volunteers in all the Pacific and the West Coast. There is one employee, it's all a software system, a website. And pilots, airplane owners, drivers donate their time and resources. To allow families to take their members to treatment. And these treatments, say cancer or other diseases are recurrent. So it would be every three weeks, every month, so it starts becoming expensive. Sadly, half of my passengers don't come back because they die. The other half happily don't come back because they go into remission. One of my superhero, well, I have many, but one was Maverick. You probably heard the story of Maverick in the Flathead Valley. It was a nine-years-old wrestler. Who I took, whom I took my business in the plane and I took to Denver. And he never came back. He fought his fight with this immunodeficiency disease and he never won it. But he won the hero fight, because he taught all of us what it, what it is to, to be going away with dignity. And, and these youngsters, youngsters can teach us a lot. So I stop here and shoot away all the questions you want. I can talk about campaign, I, whatever you want, I'm here.
Appreciate that, thank you for some background and thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing with the youth. As you're aware, Rod and I have our Young Entrepreneur Syndicate. That we're working with the youth as well as adults, but we all have a passion for that. So thank you for that. I've got a couple of questions that came in from outside guests that weren't able to be here tonight. I see Rod's got a question, let me ask one of mine, Rod, and then I'll get right to you. And this question comes from Jerry. And she's asking, what advice would you give to others that want to be on the city council? I think people have looked to you, as you suggested, you were kind of an outsider and you got on. You know, what advice would you give to them that are thinking about it to get them over the hump and actually give them some confidence?
Well. I would say, and it's a very simple message, right? So you figure out what you're going to die on, which battle you're, you're going to die. And I figured out three of that, okay? And then you go for it and it's a bet. I mean, if people marry those battles, they will follow you, even if, if they do not know it. If they don't marry them, you'll never get them anyhow. And you have to represent those people who voted for you. So you better clear on what you're going to, which battles you're going to die. Because they are going to come up with you, they will follow you. They're never going to be in the arena with me, they come close. But the arena is a sweaty bloody place. And, and I invite everybody to come in the arena. I'm the one who didn't want to sit on that bench. And I put a stint and then eventually they made me sit up on that bench because of video and audio requirements. But I wanted to sit with the people that I represent. So get three points. No, I mean, in my campaign, I had Whitefish, the whole Whitefish was an acronym. And W meant wise growth. And that was my biggest battle, because I'm adamant about this town that keeps saying, we're smart, we're smarter, we're cooler. And then our growth policy, which is the legal term for what I call master plan, is dated 2007. So here we are trying to decide disputes and I call it legislating from the bench. Am I doing the echo? So, so I say, if we have a good master plan and then we zone, which means legislate accordingly to it. We shouldn't ever be judges, actually I disagree that we're judges. So I make a point, every time I sit in city council and they present a matter that they call quasi judicial, I wear the quasi robe. And, and finally they're getting it and they roll their eyes. But I say, you know, and if I'm wearing the quasi robe, don't come to me with public comments that doesn't point me to articles of legislature. So going back, I say three points that you want to die on, want to fight for. Be fully documented, not by hearsay. You know, someone told me, you're going to collect 25 signatures. And I said, huh? So I went and read the CB code and that ordinance was changed, I think 15 years ago. But so go back and it's a lot of work. You know, I put 25 to 35 hours a week for this job that pays me $0. But hopefully gives me the satisfaction that I'm, I'm helping changing things for the better. Being the megaphone of many other people, oh, 1100 people who voted for me. Plus the ones who cannot vote for me, but support me like you guys. And, and hopefully representing you in a worthwhile manner. So three points, lots of work. I mean, I decided to take from June 21st last year, when I fired. Till Election Day, I worked in my campaign every day but every Saturday. Every Saturday I was off the grid, I was climbing a mountain, backcountry skiing, whatever, off the grid because I needed. But all the other six days, from 4pm till 10pm, because I have a real job. I couldn't support my habit of civic assom and if I didn't have a real job, I was working in my campaign.
Thank you for throwing in that last part, because oftentimes people use their job as an excuse not to. Do what I call the Lord's work and get elected for a position. So thank you for that. Rod, you had a question and I've got a couple more after you.
Yes, thanks. First, I want to say Giuseppe, thank you so much for, for doing what you're doing and for doing it for free. You know, public service is, is a thankless job, whether you're paid or not. But the fact that, that you came in from not being born in an American and saw your responsibility in this is. It's inspiring to me all over again, being an American. And if, if I could transfer that passion for this country and this opportunity to other people. That, that's my greatest goal and I think it's our goal of 1776. So first, that's, that's my thank you. And now, because I, I was elected to city council as an outsider, never being involved in, in politics eight years ago. And so I want to ask you, what was the biggest takeaway? What's the biggest thing you've learned about local politics? You know, what, what's, what's the biggest thing that shocked you or that you, you found most interesting? That, that's intrigued you or that was unexpected?
That's a very good question and I see the fabric of leadership, because these are the kinds of questions I ask when I interview. People in settings like this, so good job, appreciate that. I have to say, part of my job campaigning from June 21st was attending every single city council. And every planning board meeting at city. So I learned a lot by sitting on this other side. Not only was I attending, but being a pilot and a jet pilot, I do a lot of training in simulators. So I simulated to be sitting up there. So I would download the packet that everybody can do. I keep telling, suggesting to people Wednesday afternoons before the council that week. You can download the same packet of information I have access to. I don't have more information than any other public citizen. And started it and I wrote my job and as they were doing their deliberations, I would mouth, I would move to do this. I would second to this. So I had pretty much a clear idea of everything. But one thing that I learned at the very beginning, actually after I was elected before I was sworn in. Which is the thing that I'm adamant about, it's a battle, I'm going to fight and I wasn't planning, I was going to fight it. Which is this, my oath of office and any public officer in Montana, besides the same oath of office. Say that I swear to support, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the State of Montana. And to deliver the duties of my office with fidelity, so help me God. Now, the two constitutions have an article, and I think it's in both, the same article two, I might be wrong. That say, the branches of government are three. Judicial, executive and legislative, no person, person means body, shall empower more than one branch at a given time. And we all know this as separation of powers, check and balances, that's some of the cool things that the founding fathers and the constitutional. Convention figured out very early, because they wanted to get out from monarchy, amongst the other things. So here I'm sitting, a city council. And I'm told that this item is quasi judicial and then the next item is legislated. Now I say quasi, I'm familiar with Italian, many legal terms are Latin, because the first university was in Bologna in 1485. And they have a law school in there. So we say things like ex parte communication, that means talking on the side. Or quasi judicial, quasi means almost. So I thought almost means that it's almost a judgment. No, I went to the MCA, remember, I say, go back to the book. I went to the MCA and quasi judicial says it's fully judicial, ruled by a non-judge. So how, how do we reconcile this? How do we reconcile that I'm a government representative body representative? Okay, and our city is called self governed by a city charter. And it's elected council and the mayor and the city manager. At the same time, this elected council who, whom I thought was going to be a legislative branch. And I believe that's what it should be. See, it's also in, on this bench and, and judges rules. So I wanted to buy myself a powder wig, but I decided that it would have been too provocative, hence the quasi robe. But I'm, I'm writing a brief, I have a dear friend lawyer, really, really good friend, I can say his name, Jim Ramlo. And he and I are looking at this brief, it's another English word that comes from Latin, which means short. But the word brevity, brevity. But the word brevity, 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 shortness comes from the same root in Latin. This brief is not a brief anymore because I'm at 36 pages and I'm not done yet. But I'm telling you, this is the, the thing that surprised me. That we sit up there on this bench and we rule as judges. And every work session, every motion, I make the point of saying, had we legislated better first, we would not need to be judging now. Because we're judging because of the holes that we have left in our legislative side. And the holes are there because the growth policy, some of the people were attending with part of lighting in 2007 has stayed 2007. And zoning and regulations tries to comply with that, but it's obsolete, the growth policy is obsolete. So last comment, I explained to them, again, I'm a pilot. Imagine flying from Kalispell towards Seattle, but my charts have Bozeman and Billings. So I'm flying towards Seattle, but my charts in my plane are from behind me. That's how I feel sometimes driving a city council because I have no growth policy. I have no compass, no plumb line to refer to. And sometimes I want to abstain from ruling because I don't think it's very, it's a very intelligent way of conducting business.
Thank you so much for that. I, I have to say, I empathize with exactly what you're saying. And, and I did in Cal, I served in Kalispell and I was actually a member of the Growth Policy Committee for Kalispell, the Plan at 2035. And I can tell you that while we sat down and we were looking 30 years into the future, you can't look 30 years into the future properly without looking 50 and 100 years into the future.
I'm into that.
Yes, and, and so, I mean, I, I see this valley 100 years from now, not tomorrow. I don't see the problems we have today, I see it from way down there. So I totally empathize in your analogy as a pilot, really, you know, with charts in the back, how can you go forward? And the interesting thing is, and, and I, I have to ask, because there's an empowering thing when, when you discover this as a polit, as a, an elected politician. You are a representative. And so you're bringing your history, your knowledge, your common sense, your, your knowledge of the constitution, your beliefs. You bring all that to the table. So when you're wearing your quasi robe, I love that, by the way, I'm gonna adopt that if I ever go back into politics on the front end, I'm gonna do that. That's the best thing ever. But, but truly, you get to make those choices because that's how our government works. And so the, the citizens, even those who didn't elect you because you won, empower you to be able to do that because of lack of planning. You know, you get to fill those holes. So I, I hope that you found your place in that. It, it took me a couple of years to figure out my role. Where are you at in your process, your growth process?
Again, there, we have a beautiful, we don't, we do not have to reinvent the wheel. The wheel has been already been banned and thank God for that. And it's called the due process, the due democratic process. And we have a planning board in Whitefish and we have a city staff, which has a department that is called Planning and Building. So here I am sitting at council and the applicant went to the planning and building department who applied the rules that some councilor 10 years ago wrote, the zoning legislation, regulations. And then they negotiated the variances, whatever. And then it goes to the planning board. Planning board is quasi judicial, they're already the judges. By the way, side, on the side, there is a board of adjustment that is even more judicial, but it's still quasi judicial. So they go through the planning board and it's public hearing. So all the people want to make their points, which by the way, if I one day am mayor and wanna adjust the rules of public hearing, and that's a different discussion, they can make their point. So now there is city staff recommending with modifications, there is planning board voting and path recommended. They cannot pass, right? They recommend or do not recommend. And now I'm the smart guy, six guys, six people at council. And who am I? So I, I explain, every time I make a motion, I explain, I say, listen, my rule is this, the planning board passed it, recommended it. Has there been any change to the project from the moment the planning board recommended it to today? Yes, okay, send it back to the planning board. No, okay, then I go with the planning board recommendation, very simple. So my, my components of the meetings is very short. In fact, city council meeting are getting very short. And I think they like it. I mean, the other council people like it. Yesterday was a record, 38 minutes, 38 minutes. My first council meeting, my few first ones had a packet of 1,400 pages to be started between Wednesday and Monday and lasted until 11. There is an old ordinance that says we'll stop, I think, at 11. So it's again, the due process of democratic democracy. You follow it, you stay in the rails and life is easy. And if anybody ever sues us, I'm okay standing in a court of law and say, hey, I applied those rules. Maybe I misunderstood it, okay, punish me for that, but there was no bad with.
I, I have one follow-up question for you. Will you do this again?
I, okay, the audience is not huge. I do not know how many people will watch this again, but part of my campaign was I went to a bunch of state representatives and former senators and I asked them to teach me. Because again, I'm a businessman, I know nothing about politics. And I'm glad this was a nonpartisan race because I'm not registered, I admit it, I'm not registered to any party. But I'm against pot. And I'm against bad traffic. And I'm against the waste, waste of property, taxpayer money. So when I ran, in my heart, I made a commitment to run twice. Honestly, I thought I would run twice because the first time I didn't think I would be elected. But again, I, I say to people, when you negotiate, you need to be able to sit on the other side of the table and be okay with that negotiation. So those two times stick with me. I got elected, so that's four years commitment. To answer your question, yes, I run again, one more time, I run again, yeah.
Maybe I wasn't quite clear. Will you run for other offices? Has this inspired you? Okay, let me, let me rephrase. Has this inspired you to get involved in politics in a deeper way? Maybe, maybe that, that's kind of what I'm looking at here.
As, as an individual and as a company, we've always been very involved. Supporting, donating and, and being involved from behind. So I was involved in policy and politics, but I wasn't the, the figurehead. This is the first time I am in front. And yes, it attracts me. At the same time, I also understand that there are a number of compromises and the compromises are bigger and bigger the higher the office. That's my interpretation, I might be wrong. I'll give you an example. I felt very saddened by our primaries, you know? Jimmy said that if you become unruly or disrespectful, I'm gonna catch you off. And the first thing that came through my mind is, what about the first amendment? But, but you know what? Sometimes the level in dictatorship is not that bad. I lived in Singapore and I never locked my house, I left my kids in the streets and never, never anybody would kidnap them. But going back to the question, if I could run independently, and I'm super conservative, I'm, I'm probably, you know, 20 years ago, I'd be a Republican. Today, I'm not sure and, you know, it's what it is right now, it's my belief system. I would run for state legislature, I love to serve a state. And honestly, I know they get paid a little bit, I donate. Whether if they pay a diary or a per diem or whatever, I love to do that. Because I'm learning, well, I, I'm not learning, I knew that Y Fish, it doesn't live in a bubble. Y Fish is a city that is part of a county, which is part of a state. And some other of my colleagues want to think that they are, they can rule, they can live in this abstract world and F the county and the state would do whatever we want. And if the state shuts our programs down, they're the bad people, it's not us. Even this morning, I was at Kalispell City Chambers at the municipality summit. And another council person said that we had this inclusionary zoning and the legislature shut it down. And I said, well, actually, we got caught. It wasn't that the legislature shut it down, it was an unfair tax burden to only a certain category of citizenship, which are the builders, the developers and the land owners, I guess. So, so until we figure out that we're part of the same country, the same state, the same county, it's gonna be tough. Hence, I love to be part of that connected fabric between city. I work at county level, although in a very specialized job. I am a commissioner at the Glacier Park International Airport. I'm actually the vice chair. And that's an amazing job, I love that job. We're building an amazing extension of the airport. We have not borrowed a single penny yet. And we are on budget and on target so far. So I like to be part of the connected fabric, but maybe the compromises required will make me not successful. So I'm not sure about that.
Thanks for your honesty with that. And I, I appreciate more than you know, the, the compromise situation. But I think good men can get in there and, and that don't have to compromise when we stand on the constitution. I'll leave it at that. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Jim, thank you very much.
Thanks for the questions, Rod, great answers, by the way. I, you might have answered this question already, but it came in from an outside and it, what the question was, is there hope for Whitefish being as left leaning as it is? Obviously, this is coming from a conservative person, but you know, you drive around town and there's like, I don't want to go to Whitefish. But listening to you and your position and your center of gravity, I feel like there is hope for Whitefish through people like you and, and more people that are coming. But if you care to comment on that, I'd love to hear it.
Absolutely. I'm seeing, let me make a premise. While on the quasi judicial matter, we cannot talk ahead of time between us council people or I can talk to city staff to get educated, but that's it. On a legislative matter, we can lobby, we can go out for dinner. And so I get to know my other colleague representatives. And by the way, I respect every single one of them because they're in the arena, okay? And they're putting time and they're not getting paid. And I might disagree with the, the way they interpret the book and the way they interpret the due process. Or, but I shouldn't disagree with the fact with the voices they carry because they're part of my community. And if this community has 6,000, 7,000 actually residents, 6,000 registered to vote and only 4,000 vote, shame on us. You know, shame on us. The hope starts from the voter. I do believe that this time, a number of voters were tired of what they were seeing, came up and voted. And you know what, my friend Kristen Ryder, who out of California moved to Whitefish a year ago and ran and she's registered Republican, even she didn't use that as, as an advantage to run, she almost beat me. Actually, that night, I conceded to her until I found out that 300 more votes came and I won. But she was the first of the non-elected. So we would have been too conservative and she's a Republican registered. So next year, there are gonna be three seats up for relation and the mayor seat, okay? I'm already mentoring people to come and, and walk into the arena with me. And, and I know we will have more participation on the, I call it common sense side, but the, the conservative side than we've had before. And part of it is me being funny and running around town and writing letters to the editors and evangelizing that anything hard is not based on common sense. I don't care, you know, I grew up in Italy where right meant fascist. And fascist was the dictatorship. So to me, when I hear right as a kid, I run away because they were together with the Nazis, which is confusing because they were the National Socialists. So they were the Reds, so confusing. And, and, and we had a party called the Communist Party, which was the left party. So when you grow up in Italy and you wanna be similar to what a Republican is here, you voted, when I was young, Christian Democrat, there was this party. But the Christian Democrats are so big and powerful that were the most corrupted people. So there is no win-win. Here, it's the opposite, there is hope. I, I think corruption is anywhere power is, but it's less here than in other places. And by the way, you wrote said, I wish there was a way to show people how good this country is. There is a way, take them anywhere outside of US for six months. I mean, I'm serious. And they, I mean, all those people from Hollywood that when President Trump got elected, once it said, I'm gonna go to Canada. Why didn't they go to Canada? I don't know what happened, I was waiting. I wanted to see who's gonna leave this country. So, so this is a beautiful place. This is still a beautiful place. Y Fish is a beautiful place. There are people who believe in different values. And I might disagree with them, but I do believe there are at least 1,200 people who got up and voted. And there are people who believe in values that are similar to the values of the 1776 Syndicate. So absolutely, there is hope. And you know what, the ones that are on the other spectrum, that's fine, they need representation. And that's part of that democratic process.
I think you gave me my new favorite line and that's respect because they're in the arena. And we need more people in the arena and I appreciate that you're mentoring people. We'd love to bring some value to those people as well through what we do at 76. We've got another question from Diane, she's running city council in Newport Beach. And what her concern is, you know, nonpartisan, but she's, she's already dealing with the attacks through the campaign. And she was curious, and I apologize she couldn't be on the call. How, how you deal or dealt with those attacks as you were running? Was it laser focused or did you have a lot of drinks at night?
First of all, attacks come in different ways and shapes and forms. Today, everybody gets very excited about what happens on a social medium such as Facebook or Instagram. But I, but I had letters, I had letters to the editor, I had condescending attitude to the editors written against me. And by the way, the papers were not that friendly in my mind and, and not, they didn't give me the same bandwidth they gave other people, even today. Even today, at the end of every meeting, there is the session that is called council man, or councilor's remarks. And I used that moment to say things like, just don't forget our growth plan dated 2007. Just don't forget that we just ruled from the bench and I don't feel good about it. So I keep saying these things, never quoted on the papers. So what do I do? I fight the same battle. I'm lucky and savvy on various media. I have an official YouTube page, so I take snippets and I mount them to get ready them and I publish them. Then though, I took the people who I thought had influence, not all of them. You know, there are the ones that make splashes in the swimming pool, but everybody discards. But the ones that I thought had a good following, and I called them. You know, I called them a messenger or over the phone. And my line was always, first of all, thank you for being involved and passionate. Number two, I have a fear that you are putting words in my mouth or you are saying things without knowing what my, my program is. So if you are serious about going to battle against me, I think we should meet. So you can hear me, you can ask me questions. And after we talk, feel free to attack me, no problem, but don't attack me on hearsay. And I did. And, and someone, the funniest one was this guy says, I'll go, but you buy breakfast. I said, of course I buy breakfast, it wouldn't be bribery otherwise, I was joking. But I did, I bought a bunch of breakfast. Alex at Buffalo has come to know me not only as a normal customer or a family dad, but as a politician doing campaign in his restaurant. And, and all of them, all of them have turned around. There is not a single one who was adamant, angry, mad against me. And after, and afterwards, all of them but two told me they voted for me. And those two did not vote for me because it was a mail-in ballot and they had already voted. And these two now text me every single city council and they go, Jim, man, you gotta say this. And I say, stop harassing me until you vote for me. And again, I tease them. But it's, it's about embracing them and listening. you vote for me. And again, I tease them. But it's it's about embracing them and listening to them, and not hiding yourself behind a pinky or behind buzzwords and principles. Because again, we're all neighbors here.
I think that advice goes way beyond any city council position, but really, any elected position, whether that's school board that I'm on, all the way up to the top. We'd all be better politicians or elected officials if we took that approach. So thank you for that. This is a total left ball question. Can you buy Next Gen OTC?
What's Next Gen OTC? Translate the acronym.
Over the counter, I guess.
Oh, oh, no. And I know advertising. My company, I'm blessed, is doing very well. We have almost two hundred thousand customers, and they're again, all over the world. And actually, we try not to push it in Whitefish. I try to keep the two things separate.
Yeah, well, I can't weed out the cut the questions, right?
No, that's fine. And you can go on the payrock.com website and inquire, and we'll get, we'll be very happy to serve you. I got my little app.
Thank you. Look, we're always respectful of people's time. We're coming up on almost an hour here. But, you know, I just have to say again, as I suggested earlier in the call when we started, is that I'm so appreciative of the role that you're playing. And I get a little bit of an extra insight on that, because I'm on your email blast. But being somebody on school board, I know how much work it is just to participate as a board member, and to see all the extra stuff that you do. Like you said, you know, the YouTube videos, and the emails, and the things that you put together for people to be connected to the role that you're playing. I would really want to encourage everybody that's elected or in a position such as yours, that they fall suit of what you're doing. So thank you so much for that. And I'll let you have closing word, and then I'll let Rod give out the final, final word tonight.
Rod, you are speak, this is an example. When I did my debate, I had backgrounds ready. Again, it takes a little work. But this was a prototype of the ballot, and I was endorsing also Kristen Ryder here, and and G Man for WF is my website. So when you talk about web and email, feel free, everybody who listens to this, to find me on Instagram or YouTube, and I'll start forwarding information to whoever is interested. Go ahead, Rod.
All right. Well, again, I just, I want to thank you again for your passion and for your service, and for putting it out there, because Whitefish is a part of our community. You know, it's it's a part of our community, it's part of our our county, our state, and our country. So, you know, as much as sometimes Whitefish gets a bad rap for being that that leftist, I don't know, almost the the redheaded stepchild, if you will, of of Montana, along with Missoula and Bozeman. But, you know, they're our family, they're our friends, they're our customers, they're they're people we do business with, they're people we rely on. And we're all in this together, and you've brought that to home tonight. And I don't think I I could say it any better than than you when you you really said, this isn't about party, I'm an independent. And I think if if we get into that modality and stop labeling, I think we can, we can go a long way. So that being said, again, from someone who served my community in in the same regard you are, although I got a little stipend, which, you know, kind of made it like half a minimum wage, maybe. At least it was something. But I so appreciate you taking the time to come on and and share with us how you you came on to the scene and what you're doing. And I look forward to hearing a lot more from you.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, listener from seventeen seventy six Syndicate. This is a great organization. Keep supporting it.
Thank you, Giuseppe. And let's be honest, Whitefish has great restaurants up there, so.
Absolutely. By the way, someone texts and said, can can I see your tie? Here's my tie. And this one of the ties I wear at the city council meetings. So so they're now getting curious, like every city council, they all wonder what tie I'm gonna wear. So it's becoming another little thing like like my quasi robe.
I love it. I love it. Well, if you've enjoyed this Zoom call with Giuseppe from city council up in Whitefish, please share with a friend. We've had some wonderful guests on. We have many more to come. And we really appreciate our members and everybody that plays an active role in our country, in their elected positions and supporting positions. So thank you all very much. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.